Welcome to the March 2020 work session. Since this is the work session, we won't have a prayer or pledge or anything like that. We'll go ahead and get started. First on the agenda will be Sheriff Myers discussion of the contract pension.
My name's Stan Graham. I'm with One America. We do the benefit and the actual consulting work on the sheriff's retirement and benefit plan. And the first thing, I think maybe you all have a copy of a couple of plans.
About every spring, the merit board normally invites Stan in to review the rules and the policies of the retirement accounts that we currently, the merit board monitors. And Stan gives a presentation and all the deputies are invited and it just reminds them of what the rules are every spring. And then Stan's kind enough, he does a PowerPoint and any deputies that are on duty that day that can't attend, we send out a PowerPoint. It's a concise review of the rules. So we've been looking at some changes to those rules for some time. This is nothing new. So this is just some things that we pondered for a while and we had Stan. Hi, John.
Hi, Susan.
Thank you. We've had Stan write up some proposals which you have and just to, I don't know how long you got these. Did you just get these tonight?
I haven't gotten them.
Okay. There's the, well, let me just give you a summary. The retirement account for the sheriff's department has two accounts. There's the big account that we pay out pension payments and there's a secondary account which is called the supplemental which does, you know, a whole variety thing, death benefits, workers' comp, those types of things. So they're two separate accounts and they have been performing very well in the last few years, but so is your 401p, I'm sure. So we looked at the rules and Stan, if you want me to go through these, I'll summarize them and then Stan is the detail man with the numbers here because he does numbers and crunches what it means to us for this particular plan. But we came up with three proposals, three separate proposals. One of them is in the larger document that you have. This one that says second amendment to Bertholme County Police Retirement Plan is the main one that has the most money in it that pays out the pension. And this one with the more blank cover page pays out what we're discussing now are really death benefits. That's what the proposal is for. Let me go through that one first, if you would. The second one, the death benefits, if you will look in, again, that's this one, folks. First of all, the Bertholme County Sheriff's Department has never had a deputy killed in line of duty in its history, okay? And we're lucky and I hope it never happens. But I think because it's never happened, we really didn't look at this real seriously about what would happen if a deputy were killed in line of duty. You know, a 35-year-old deputy with a spouse and two small children. So we considered what was currently offered and what would be, what we thought was a reasonable approach to this. What's currently done is the surviving spouse, whether it be male or female, would receive $200 a month. Any surviving minor children would receive $30 a month each child until they are 18. Our proposal would be 1,000 per month for surviving spouse and 200 per minor child for each child of an officer killed in duty until they were 18.
Ain't that kind of low? Ain't that kind of low considering national average? We ought to be giving our deputies a little bit more than that in their surviving spouses.
This is what we're proposing.
Just as a citizen.
Raise your hand, please, if you want to speak and then we'll call our man.
Okay.
And you wanted to discuss that one first and if you have any questions on costs or whatever.
Yeah, can you explain the cost? I mean, I doubt anybody up here is going to have a, well, I shouldn't say that. Yeah, if you could just give the details.
Okay. And I don't know that we've really calculated anything. It kind of depends on what happens. I mean, right now, there's no cost at all because this has never happened in the history of Bertholme County. But it's a new world out there.
Right. So is that an insurance plan, so he's paid much extra for that or it's just if that happens, we pay?
This is the $1,000 a month for the spouse and the 200 for the dependent child would, if you were to adopt this plan amendment in the benefit plan, that's, those would be the benefits we would start valuing. Now, as you mentioned, the benefit plan is the much cheaper plan that the county funds. I mean, it's pretty much fully funded now and there is an insurance policy in this plan of death benefit policy of 25,000 a month, or excuse me, 25,000 in the event of a death. The plan pays the premiums for that, you know, a pretty minor group term plan. The $1,000 and the 200 would be valued. And the cost, we looked at it a couple of years ago and it was very minimal because the chance of someone dying at a pre-retirement age, which is, you know, 55 or younger in this, in this plan, is pretty small. But it happens. And so if it were to happen, then there's going to be a slight increase, almost certainly, in funding in this plan. It's just going to depend on how old the spouse was, basically, is what it would come down to. Because that benefit's going to be payable immediately and for his or her life.
Who makes the determination if it's a line of duty death or not?
That, the line of duty has state and federal definitions.
It ultimately boils down to interpretation. I mean, I'm just going to play devil's advocate here. A neighbor runs over and says, somebody's breaking my house. The deputy walks out of his house and falls down and hits his head and he's dead. I mean, who's going to make the determination, a line of duty or not? I mean, I've got a concern on that because it's a gray area and I'm sure somebody ultimately has to make that decision and I haven't seen where it's, who makes that decision.
Right.
Are there regulations on that or are there definitions on that?
You know, there's going to have to be something somewhere in the fed side or the state side on line of duty. I mean, that's a common terminology, you know? If it comes to the merit board having to make it, you know?
How do most of the other people you represent make that decision and how's that decided?
Again, we're not asking for a change for the 25,000 which has been in there forever. We're not asking for any change. We would ask that it stay as is.
So the change basically is the amount of money that, I'm sorry. The change is the amount of money that the spouse would be receiving and the child.
Minor children, only until they're 18.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Right now, it's 200 for the spouse and 30 a month for dependent child under age 18. Those are old statutory-based minimums. County police plans across the state, some have changed, like this has been pondered here. Some have gone to 1,000 for the dependent spouse, some to 500 for the dependent children. One went to 1,000 for dependent child. And so I'm just trying to, you know, reconcile with numbers that are from the 80s or before the days to our terms. George, do you have any questions on that? George, you want to do a question?
I do have one more, but while in the merit board meeting, I raised a question about whether there should be a cost of living change on a yearly basis instead of doing $1,000 for year one. Are there anything so that we were not running into the same issues we have had right now, which, thank goodness, we haven't had to use it. So was there any response? I raised a question at the merit board meeting. I've never obviously received an answer yet. Have you received an answer on that?
I think, go ahead, Stan, because you replied about the 52.
The benefit plan benefits for spousal purposes can have a COVA attached to it.
Can.
Can. Cool increases can't start until age 55. That's state law. And so you could have a COVA in this plan. This amendment doesn't include that. You know, it can be, we didn't cost that out, let's put it this way. We did not cost a COVA a couple of years ago.
Right. Well, that's why we have, what, $20 per child that's been there forever, right?
True.
And I don't know what it was, I don't remember what it used to be or what it is now for the spouse. You're proposing $1,000, but I don't remember what was the amount.
200.
200.
200.
So from 200 to 1,000, a child from 20 to?
30 to 200.
30 to 200.
Right.
Full disclosure, if a deputy were killed in the line of duty and was eligible for retirement and was vested, he would receive that as well, just like he would if he changed his job and went somewhere else.
Yes, spouse would receive a benefit out of the retirement plan based off of years of service and average compensation. And then this thousand from the benefit plan is on top of that. The thousand is important for the non-vested deputies from the retirement plan because there wouldn't be a death benefit payable unless you were vested in the retirement plan. Vesting doesn't matter for the benefit plan.
Pretty simple. For me, this is a no-brainer.
Scott, Evelyn, Bill, you guys have any questions?
No.
Dan, you had your hand up.
Well, I was just going to say, as far as I know, that $200, I've been on board since 1978. That $200 has never changed and the children's benefit has never changed. Unfortunately, I think it's six acted like it started off. It's out of sight, out of mind. We never had it happen. I think we just, I want to say we forgot about it, but it's just a case of.
That's why I raised the question.
It never came up.
Yeah, that's why I raised the question.
I would say, we work on a lot of county police plans. I would say it comes up, you know, thinking about what you're doing here in other counties when a neighboring county had it happen or, you know, whatever. It's in.
Mark raises an interesting question to me and that is, who determines that? Should that be, should the answer to that be a process that should be included in this?
I just know, I just know when a change in the plan takes three entities and I didn't know if it'd be three entities to make the decision if that was part of the benefit or not, or if it's the sole decision of a sheriff. I mean, he makes the decision if it's a line of duty or not, but sometimes that can be split hairs there, whether it's line of duty or not.
Because technically, and correct me if I'm wrong, an officer is on duty 24/7. He or she is on call all the time. But Mark raises a question, what if the neighbor calls in in the process of, he or she going to the neighbor's house, trips, you know, breaks his neck, whatever, hopefully nothing happens, but you know, how do we determine that that individual was in fact on duty performing the duties? It's a good question. I think we ought to have in the policy a process that says this is how it's going to be determined that it was on duty or not.
Unfortunately, not every county council has a former sheriff sitting on the council acting as devil's advocate. But what I would think and suggest that you have three basic options. Number one would be the sole determination of the sheriff. Number two would be the death investigation or the results of the Bertholme County Death Investigation Team that is comprised of a prosecutor's office, city police, and state police as a sheriff, and then someone from our office. Or this officer is a merit employee. He goes by the merit board rules and regulations. I would hope or would like to see the merit board being the determining factor in whether that was an on-duty call or not. Somebody knocking on your door in the middle of the night telling you they need help, I've had that happen years ago and I took it no less serious than the radio call coming in in my car.
But then you're coming up with a solution. And what I'm raising is not for a solution. What I'm hoping is that the merit board determines what that process is going to be.
And the.
And I'm not suggesting that we determine that process here and now. I'm saying.
I think the board would love that opportunity to put that in our rules and regulations.
We meet Thursday.
So Stan, that can be stipulated, however, it's decided here. Every county can do their own thing. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So then send back, that's an issue. Do we both have any questions about that?
One question, just want you to explain it to me. So if he has enough years to retire, he stays with the 20 years and can draw his pension after that. So if he has a line of duty after he's fully invested, I don't know how many years it takes for you guys to be fully invested, but do the children, the children only get the $20, they don't get anything of the pension or anything. His wife gets the pension a certain percent and the kids get a percent until they're in legal age. I'm just talking from previous, from a different pension.
Right.
I mean, if you're vested in everything, you die in line of duty, your wife collects so much of your pension and your kids until they're legal age collect so much of your pension. That's not how this works now or is this something that the city or the county had to write up?
The retirement plan pays.
This is, so this is a death benefit plan you're showing us here, right? So it doesn't go with the sheriff? So right now, this is all the wife would get would be whatever it says here right now.
Out of this plan.
Out of this plan. Now, does she get, does she get anything out of retirement plan?
Yes.
If the deputy was vested?
Well, this is just, I mean, we have a line of duty, let's say, on another department or something and they die in line of duty. They work in the job that night or whatever, they get a line of duty. Their spouse gets a percentage of line of duty death and the kids get a percentage until they reach 18 or out of college, they get a percentage of that money too.
Right. Retirement plan, the county police retirement plan does not have it work that way.
This does not work that way. This plan here, okay, I just want to get that straight. I didn't know how it worked in pressure.
Was there any comparison made between this plan and what other employees of the city and county, what they, what happened to them in their plan if they were to have an accidental death on the job?
Well, that's covered with workers' comp. That's totally different. And all of your other employees along with the sheriff's deputies do get an insurance plan, everybody gets that, and a life insurance. I believe it starts at 20,000 and then I, oh, it's at 40,000 now. But if you wanted to increase that, an employee could at a cost. And then all employees also, starting this year, also have the benefit of a long-term disability. And that's something that's in the Donovan Associate Plan that all employees also. This is all in.
This is one kitty of several kitties that will come in in a case of a death.
I just got one thing. So are the counties, I know you got, doing the increase to the dependents until they're 18. Has other counties picked that up like, you know, we haven't touched this for 30 years and the growing trend is most people go to college and the spouse is going to take care of college benefits. Is this, is it written in there where they could keep their dependent 200 going until they're finished with college and/or out on their own?
No. I mean, it just stops at 18.
Can we stop at 18?
Yes. I believe that's state statute. I know state police works a little bit differently. They pay a 23 basically, college and stuff. They're covered under a different statute and so that's why.
Why this stops at 18 instead of covering.
Everybody stops, the county police, everybody stops at 18.
Okay. Then make it right.
Right. I agree.
And you said all other counties have this or how many counties around here?
Yeah, all 92 counties have both a retirement plan and a benefit plan. And the minimum numbers are the 200 for the spouse and the 30 for the dependent child. Some have bumped those up like to be considered here. And like I said, generally, it doesn't impact the county just to put, you know, just to put these increases in the plan. It's if it actually happens, then you're going to, you know, see the increase.
You'll see it down the road.
Right.
I don't think we've got any more questions on that one, too.
If you do, we can get you answers. We do have a merit board meeting Thursday, so if maybe we could respond after Thursday to any questions you have on any of this, would that be fine then? Anything else on that one? On your other document that says second amendment to Bertholme County Police Retirement Plan, we have two proposals here. Let me talk about the drop program first and that starts on page one. We've discussed the drop program. I think it's been brought to council before, but I didn't verify that in minutes, but I think you've been, had that proposed to you before. Close Police Department has the drop program for retirees. The Fire Department in the city has drop program. We consider, and Stan can walk through the numbers because honestly, I'm an accountant, but I've not walked through the numbers. But basically, we see it as a recruitment tool. There's a lot of competition. You know, we just closed applications, I think, the end of January to fill some slots and there's a lot of competition out there. You get a lot of applicants, but they're applying everywhere. So they're comparing from one to another between what we do and the city and Franklin and whatever. So the drop program, it's cost neutral. I'm an accountant, I get that part. It's cost neutral. It's simply a delay in payments. The nice thing about it as president of the merit board that I like about it is that you can get up to three years of warning that somebody's going to retire in order to fill that position. So you can cut, it's kind of like planning, kind of like strategic planning, which I like. Instead of somebody deciding to retire, you know, in two weeks and suddenly you've got a spot open and you're trying to fill slots to even, you know, cover shifts. So I like that for that reason. There is no cost to it. Stan can verify that. And it's simply a recruitment tool in my mind and I'll take any questions. We can look those up and get answers probably in private if you need anything else.
The drop program works by them freezing their pension at that time, but they still collect a pay while they're working.
Yes.
And they're going to draw whatever say they would have been, $12,000 a year, going to take that $12,000 a year and put it in accounts when they leave, they'll be paid that amount when they leave.
Right.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
There is, if you go in the drop, your benefit's frozen. So if the county, you know, bumped up the merit deputy's salaries 20% a year for three straight years and you're in drop, yeah, you get a pay raise.
They can always drop back out of it, too.
In the county police, you're in.
So they're not going to be allowed to come back out of it?
Right.
If they sign up, they're not allowed because basically someone will let you, say you sign up with 25 years.
Right.
Yeah, they're not allowed to get back in, I know.
Yeah, in this case, you're in. So it's not an easy decision. You're not required to do it. You have to be at retirement age. So there are going to be some deputies and you can't have more than 32 years of service.
That's right.
So there are going to be some deputies that were hired or are going to be hired at a young age and by the time they get to the retirement age in this plan, which is 55, they may not be able to get it. And it's not for everybody because you're setting an end date.
So they hit 32 years, they can't work past 32 years, what you're trying to say?
Right. No amount of time before the drop.
And honestly, right now, we don't have a lot of people that would even be eligible for this if you instituted it today.
I'm just thinking farther down the road. I mean, you've got people that's got 20 years in or you've got, you know, or they're 45 and got 20 or, you know, so over the next five to 10 years, you'll see people.
That's right. About 70 counties have it.
Right.
It's not mandatory. There are some counties that have never had anybody use it because it's literally, it isn't for everybody because you, as I mentioned, you're setting an end date here. Susan mentioned the retention issue and knowing when somebody's going to leave.
Yes.
In this case, you've frozen their accruals and you're not hiring someone new to come into this plan to start earning a benefit either. And so there are things, you know, both outside the plan and inside the plan that, you know, make it attractive to have and it's designed to be cost neutral.
And again, this comes from the large pension plan, which is, it's the big one, not the supplemental.
I'm just going from memory and I haven't read this for a while, but it's the age combination of 55 and the 32 years, but someone could be 55 and may have eight years in the month. Currently would be eligible then to enter it?
Right. Yeah. As long as you satisfy the plan's definition of normal retirement age, which is up next.
Okay.
That's right.
Theoretically. I was trying to do that from memory, but I couldn't remember.
You know, you're eligible to do that. We don't typically see a lot of shorter service people go into drop because you give up, you know, you're giving up a decent size accrual on those earlier years, but you're, yeah, you could do that.
And it was brought before this council and I think a couple of members might have been on it back then. I know Evelyn was on it probably 15, 18 years ago, this drop program.
For a not, for zero dollar impact, it's a nice recruitment tool.
And a management tool that.
Yes.
At least planning to know, and my understanding is if, when you sign up and it gives the management able to, if employee X says, I'm leaving in two years, that gets you a two-year plan to get that place and that's where he signs up. He may not be up for the full three years, but they're required to tell you the out date and you can figure that out management-wise to replacement.
And you can exit earlier.
Right. But now, that's where I was confused. I didn't know if you can exit earlier or if that's what you're stuck with.
No, you can exit earlier. It's a little, the statute is a little bit different than the 77 and the excise tax plan where it's, yeah, I mean, you, we know when you sign up what the latest possible date is to exit, but you're allowed to go earlier. So you don't have to specify at that point in time.
Okay. A quick question then because it's like the county puts in X amount for that officer for the two years, say he's going to stay two years. He doesn't get any raises or he doesn't get any longevity pay, he's frozen in the salary. Then during that time period on his exit plan, if we were putting back, I was going to say 26% of the pay for his salary for that pension benefit, does he get 3% on top of that when he leaves for the money that's been sitting there for that two years?
Yeah, I mean, the plan amendment does have the.
So he's getting something from his money and just it's sitting there and the county, if we earn more than that while it's sitting in the jackpot, we keep.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. Because the county's funding, I look at it as the county's funding the plan in its entirety.
The big picture and they're getting what they would get normally. Okay.
Right.
I'm good.
How many people have been taking advantage of the drop program?
Well, nobody in the county would never have it. So as far as a person, how many of the, like the city? No, we did not have it. We do for city fires, city police, but not county.
Right. It's a local, you know, option that about 70 counties have it now.
Right.
And again, Evelyn, right now, if we were to institute today, there would not be a lot of people that would even be eligible and would not be likely to take it. But it's revenue neutral.
There's, you know, some people past 55 who could do it, but they've got more than 32 years of service.
It's very enticing for a.
But they can't sign up, so they can't sign up at 25 years and do a three-year drop.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah. I mean, if it's there and they want to leave at 25 years of service, they can sign up then and have their money accrued for.
It's got to be at least 55, that's right, yeah.
I understand that. I don't know how many are 55. I'm just saying, you say no one can do it, but they can do, they can sign up at 20 if they're 55.
Right. Very good.
You know?
We don't see a lot of, a lot of it work that way, but you're not prohibited from doing it. As long as you satisfy the normal retirement age definition in the plan, you can do it.
Right.
Typically, we see the deputies across the state do it with either 27, 29 years of service and they give up their last three.
In the online, it's a.
It helps, it's a tool, yes.
It's a tool to give them a savings account for them to walk out the door and have some cash. They'll be taxed on it.
Well, I just want people to understand. I didn't, some of them may not understand how it works, so I mean, I'm just making sure that most of the board understand how it works.
And I don't know, I mean, do they have take home cars now? I mean, we, a lot of them have to.
They all have take home cars.
They have to go out by car with it.
And it's taxed in the year it's received.
Scott, I was just going to say that this drop plan is a little more restrictive than what you, what you're familiar with, with this study.
Right. I just know you have to be a certain age and you can, once you get your 20 years or whatever, wherever it's lines at, you can sign up then and say somebody come in late in life and they come in at 34 or 54. Say somebody come in late in life and they come in at 34 or 54, and they've got 21 years and they want to sign up then, they can't. And I didn't know if everybody understood that here on the board or not.
Currently, the vesting age, and this is under normal retirement, let me just, in that first paragraph, they talks about a vesting age for the sheriff's department. It's currently eight years and one month of pre-dated service. And we are proposing that it be changed to eight years. And you also see some calculations on page six about percentage of vesting, and it's, it's basically just, it's a zero or all. There's no, you know, there's no run-up to that. It's just a, it's an eight-year, one-month for minimum vesting. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you will, but I believe that, of course, the sheriff's department is term limited, and for the county offices in the county that are term limited, their vesting, I believe, is eight years.
Is that everything?
That, again, I consider this a recruitment tool.
I was going to ask why.
I consider it a recruitment tool. Anything we can do to increase what we offer, you know, the people that we're interviewing is a, is a plus for us right now to compete in the market.
These are raises we gave this year that helped much, raising them up.
Sure, they did, and we appreciate it a lot. Thank you. Stan, you want to talk about costs?
Yeah, we, when we do our actuarial work that gives the county the funding requirement, we, we don't differentiate that, you know, someone was from within the department or without, if they're, you know, term limited at age. We assume they work all the way to the normal retirement age. And so the benefits right now are being funded that way. So if, if you drop the one month off this requirement, the, the actuarial report that we issued earlier this year basically stays the same with the funding requirement for 2021 because we're assuming everybody works until retirement age.
Which doesn't.
Without saying someone leaves, you know, short of it.
Well, you don't assume everybody does. I know you factor in at least out of 40 officers, two of them are going to die, four of them are going to quit, and all of that.
For, for funding the retirement benefit, though, we assume the retirement age is 55 years old and eight years and one month of service. If you satisfy that, you've satisfied the retirement benefit, which is the primary benefit out of this plan. Chance of dying on a pre-retirement basis, less than 1% until you get to age 65. So, yeah, there's, there's a portion of every person that die, dies at each individual year, but at that, that rate never hits 1% until you get to 65. So I'm talking about funding the retirement benefit. You know, our, our calculations assume everybody works until they're eligible.
Back to your, to your comment, Susan. If, and this is a big if, if the merit board decides that they do not want to continue having a deputy pension plan and instead they want to do it into perf.
No, I'm not, are you hearing me screaming all the way?
No, 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 no.
Fight don't happen, George.
I'll just wait there.
That's what the state tried to do a few years ago, and our, our plan is phenomenal compared to the state.
I'm not questioning that. I'm saying, let me ask the question, okay?
Okay, and you start talking about switching to perf, I'm.
If that's the case, the elected official.
I'm glad I left my gun downstairs tonight, Stan.
Probably best, Mark, it's probably best.
I'll let you ask.
All right, go, George, sorry.
The elected official will then be vested at eight years in the time.
True.
Okay? Now, I'm not suggesting that we change from the current plan to the perf plan, and I'm not suggesting that. But if that were to be the case, elected officials would be eligible to retire at eight years period.
Just the statutory offices.
Statutory office.
Which are also the term limited offices, correct, Laura? Is that the, it's the same? Are there any differences? I understood it was the term limited offices.
I understood it was statutory offices.
I don't know if there's difference there.
Like, we don't, we have to be, us up here have to be here 10 years. We are not.
Right.
Evelyn, what, three years?
Yes.
Okay, Stan, let me ask you a question. So I can understand this, because this has been farthest thing from my brain for a few years, but I'm thinking of something a little different. So I'm no actuary or a person. So, and I know when you guys do all your computing and everything else, it's strictly numbers. Generically speaking, 40 deputies. Out of those 40 deputies, you look at their ages and their health, their everything, and what the end game's going to cost you.
Right.
So you take a snapshot every January 1, who's on the department and all of that.
And who's retired, drawn.
Who's retired, who's going.
Right.
And then what you're telling me now, you assume that with all that snapshots done every January, by us changing this from eight years and a month to eight, it will not effectively increase our pension plan because that's everything that you based already, your assumption.
Right. Now, every, you know, as you mentioned, every January 1, we, you know, we gather new census data.
Right.
You know, take a look and see who's still there, you know, if somebody leaves and we.
And then we've got a 20-year deputy coming on, and then a 69-year-old guy left, which would change the dynamics because that 20-year-old's going to live to 95 theoretically.
Right.
And that 65-year-old guy may be gone in 10 years.
Right.
So that factors in the three different payment structures you give each year.
Right. And I'll, and I'll mention, you know, the auditor's office got a copy of the report. I mean, your, your plan is very well-funded. The, the investment people that have, you know, worked with the merit board and the sheriffs in the past, I mean, your plan is one of the better-funded county police plans in the state by, you know, a pretty wide margin. Last year, the, the rate of return for the investments was over 20%. And so that, that helps. We're, we assume six and three quarters, that the trust assets will be over a year. And when, when you do 20 or in that ballpark, that's a gain. And so your, your plan is well, very well-funded. You can look on the gateway.
But it funds a lot of, it funds a lot of people that are retired, too, that's out there, too.
Right, and that's all, that's all.
We spent many years with nobody being retired and putting a lot of money in there. But I got a question on your six and three quarters percent. I saw in the document 6%. Is there a reduction in that, or pose a new one? You said 6%, and I thought it was 7% before, and I was trying to figure out why it's because it.
I didn't, it's not 6.
It was 6 in the document that I.
Remember this document?
I saw 6%, which kind of threw me because I thought it was 7 before, to be honest with you.
It, it had been 7, and that was changed around the same time that, that perf had their rate lowered, so six and three quarters. Know which, which page?
I just remember re-glancing a while ago, and I saw 6% and it was something different. But it is changed, which is why I was asking why it changed. I didn't know.
Stan, this says that, it talks about the earnings in excess of the prior year assumption of 6.75.
Right.
It looks like you're maybe considering.
What page you on?
Well, I'm on a different document that I just got.
That's about, oh.
Yeah.
Oh, are you looking at the plan amendment?
Yeah.
The plan amendment?
Okay.
Oh, no, that's, the plan amendment assumption, they're on the very first page. It talks about 6%. That, when someone exits from drop, they can choose to take their drop accumulation, you know, the, the accumulation of all the payments they didn't get. They could choose to take that as a monthly benefit for the rest of their life. That's the interest rate that we, and the, and the mortality specified below it. That's how we convert the drop accumulation to an annuity, basically.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I was thinking the other one.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, this, the plan assumption is six and three quarters. It was changed in 2013. This, we've been in such a low interest rate environment for, you know, numerous years, and, you know, if you're a 50%, 50% fixed income investment, it's tough to get, you know, 7 with the fixed income rate so low. So that's, we went to six and three quarters about six or seven years ago, and that, that raises contribution requirements.
Right.
Perf does the same thing, but it's, it's the prudent thing to be doing.
Okay.
Is that, is that your breakdown, 50/50?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me what your, what your plan is. I think your plan's, your plan's probably a little bit more aggressive.
730.
Yeah, your plan's probably a little bit more aggressive.
Which, you know, the S and P was up close to 30% last year, but if you got 30% fixed income, that's the 20.
Yeah, the rate of return last year was 21.8.
Yeah.
So that will place you almost certainly in the top 10 of county police plans, probably higher than that when we're all done. And, you know, your, your plan, and by the way, we, we do our calculations where when there's really good years in the assets or bad years, they don't all get recognized at once.
Is that.
Those are phased in.
Is that a match for your financial expenses?
So.
And I would assume we're going to feel the downside worse than most too then, right? If we're set to be 30.
It's going to take a while.
You know, you know, in 2018, that was a negative year for pretty much all pension plans. Yours was negative, flew over negative 5. That wasn't too bad.
Pretty good.
That was not too bad. And after the, the, the big hit in 2008 that all plans had, four out of the next five years, this plan did double digits, including two years over 20. And so, you know, my, my point is your, your plan's well-funded in the, the way governmental plans get measured. And in fact, the 21.8 return from last year, you banked up some of that, but it's going to be able to be used for the next four years in case of, you know, a tough year along the way. And if we weren't doing that, we weren't averaging the, the gains and losses on assets.
Would have a bump.
Your plan would be over 100% funded. And that doesn't eliminate the contribution. That eliminates the past service liability, and so you're just paying for new benefits during the year. So I can't stress that enough. That, that's not reason enough to, you know, go wild on changes. Really don't have a lot, you, you've got a 32-year plan. That's the most years of service that can be counted. You know, you have a nice plan and it's very, it's in excellent shape. It's not like you're taking a, a plan, you know, let's pick on Illinois and say you have a plan that's 40% funded, like Illinois plans, you know, maybe, and you're trying to enhance benefits in, in some way.
If any of the council members want a full copy of that actuarial report, we can have one of those available for you tomorrow at noon. It's a, it's a big chunky document.
Yep.
So if you could let Daleen know by raising a hand who wants to come in and get one.
I could.
Yeah. Is it so huge that it's too big to email?
It's.
Is that what you said?
I didn't get, I don't think I got it.
I said last year's.
We have to find anyone.
I could send you, did you send me the emails? I think it's a PDF.
I sent it to you, yeah. I'll send it to you. If you could send me a PDF, then as if we scanned it, it'd be too good. Yeah.
If it's that big of a document, I don't, I don't want a paper document, but I would mind having the electronic copy.
I'll just email you all the PDF.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Daleen. You're welcome.
And Stan, I just, this off the beaten path of the eight, the yet-year thing, but I, I've got a document here. Historically, we've been moving from the, what our contribution, if it's been the, the minimum contribution or the recommended, how old we been?
Last year, we contributed the, the accelerated funding. So on, on this document that you have in your packet.
Yeah.
It looks like this. The 584,000 is the amount that we're contributing this year, and that was the accelerated funding of county contribution on what was this sheet from last year.
Yeah, you, I'm looking at an exhibit in the, in the reports where we show what the minimum was versus what actually was deposited. There's two exhibits, one for the retirement, one for the benefit. And the retirement plan, you put it in, in 19, you put in almost 116% of the minimum.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to make sure of, that we keep that pace.
That's why that, along with the good asset return, is why you're at where you are. And.
Historically, I've seen, and I'm not saying which administration, but a prior sheriff requests underfunding, and it caused a ripple effect a few years after that, and we had to pay a lot more. And my eyes have always been on to make sure that, I don't have to fall back to that.
You know, you guys, you may not know it, but you know it. You have to turn stuff in on the gateway, and the General Assembly gets that information. They have a summer pension committee, and perf summarizes all of the local government plans that report. And if, if a county underfunds the plan from what the minimum is, they get on the list. And.
That's a bad list?
It's a bad list. There aren't any good lists to be on, but yeah.
Hard to get out.
It's, yeah, because they, they go back. They, they keep the, the prior years, your happy of the new year. And so you guys have never been on any of the bad.
But who notifies who's to get on the list? Is it auditor that's notified?
Um, that's, that's been a discussion at the, the summer, the PMO pension management oversight on, you know, what's the enforcement mechanism? And, you know, they never really answer that.
Because that's where you, because it's normally when the council finds out about it's years or months later, and then you're saying, well, we underfunded and we should have known.
When we do, when we do our reports for all the counties, if the year that just ended was underfunded, or if you've told us a number for the current year is less than the minimum, we put it in the report that you've told us this or it was underfunded the prior year. And we also put it in the letter that I send. So, you know, I haven't had to worry about it with you guys. You, you do the.
We've always.
You do the right thing, and you're where you're at because of it.
Don't you use a smoothing formula? Like so many years you don't, apparently.
Yeah, we do.
In other words, if the stock market, equity market has a bad year, then you need to fund more. You don't average, you don't take a smoothing formula?
We do.
You do?
The gains and losses, and by gains on assets means you exceeded the assumption. So anything above six and three quarters is considered a gain. Anything less, or in terms of earnings on, on six and three quarters, that's a loss. Those are all phased in 20% a year on a rolling basis.
How many years?
Five.
Five.
20%.
I think that starts way back when Wayne Beatty was there, I think.
And, you know, that's pretty common with governmental pension plans. Perf does the same thing. And, you know, I'll, you probably haven't seen it, you've seen it. Next year's number goes up, but that's because you don't get to recognize all of the 20, the, all the 21%. And, you know, if we weren't doing this smoothing, next year's contribution would be $100,000 or more lower, but it pays to do it this way. You know, you know, the last week of the stock market tells a, tells a bad.
Sure.
And so, so, yeah, you're, the, the asset figure that we came up with on this smoothing method this year was 93% of what the real market value was. And so that's a good thing when that number is less than 100. Means you've got some, you've got some good years, you've got a good performance that you should count on for future years.
With the volatile stock market too, don't be worried that we're, you know, trying to time the market for when we make one huge contribution. When, when Daleen and I took office last year, we decided to start funding the pension on a monthly contribution, rather than just in one lump sum randomly when we decided to do it throughout the year, which the prior auditor done. So, we're able to make, and those of you that invest some, it's kind of the dollar cost averaging that way.
And I applaud you for that, cause there was an auditor previously, but wait till the end of the calendar year to pay him. And I was frustrated because I wanted money in the pension plan, earned money for the deputies, instead of setting it for the county. That's a different story, but...
So we make...
Yeah, that's a, a good thing. Some counties do it quarterly, I mean, that's great, and you do it monthly. I'm sure the investment people, you know, they, they, you know, they make a decision on when to put it in and stuff, so, you know, just be, don't feel that, oh, I sent it in a week late, I've missed something for them to do. I mean, they're gonna make their decisions on how to fund it and put it in the market based off of their professional judgment. But that's a, you know, a good thing to be doing. And you'd have to serve as a process bee then, then on top of that.
Right.
Mark, you got anything else?
Nope.
Moore? Scott?
No.
Evelyn?
No, I'm glad we've always funded that properly, because we could be in trouble.
No, sir.
Again, just another comment, just to remind you, if you have a deputy that we hired five years ago, they are, they have been funded for five years for vesting purposes. We assume they're going to stay. That's already in there. Do you have anything else we need to clear out? The mayor board meeting on Thursday, we can do that.
Anybody from the audience, I'll just jump in for the president. I'm sort of a large crowd here. TA Smith would love to talk to us.
I'm pretty shy, Sheriff.
I know.
We know.
Get out of your seat, let me sit down there.
Oh, no, try again.
This'll only take about an hour, so...
Good to know.
Ryder, your last name?
Yeah. I came here tonight just, just because I'm one of the older people here. I got hired under Mike Coy, and then went to Jim McKinney, Rick Hill, two terms of Dave Van, two terms of Kenny Whitaker, and two terms of illustrious one here. I just want you to know that I've been around and saw a lot of things. And in the five years, and we're talking about it, and now I'm talking about the eight years, one month to eight years, in the five years, I've seen some made changes. Every sheriff comes in and wanna be better. And Kenny handed the baton off to Mark, and if you didn't know it, Mark should've been a CPA, because he was on those numbers day in and day out. And he, he got us to where we are as far as that numbers and stuff. And it was his responsibility, and he carried it to the max. I couldn't even follow after him half the time. But even today, he said that we're above and beyond because of that man right there, because of Mark. But he took the baton and went on. So when Sheriff Myers got elected, I'll be quite frankly, when I followed him in, I said, I told him, I said, Sheriff, I said, we don't need you. I said, you need us. And he got looked at, and I said, no. I said, let us help as a transition, you get out there and do what you do as a sheriff. And he had. I'm talking about our, our equipment, our rifles, our shotguns, our less lethal, our training. As we went from a twenty hours a month, or twenty hours a year, to most of our deputies have sixty, no less than sixty, and some of them have up to a hundred. That's all hours of training. We went from three day, on three days, four on seconds, and three on nights, to four on days, five on seconds, and four on night. That was implemented automatically, and then right from the get-go. We've, uh, we, we, we've now become the stepping stone of an illustrious agency that people wanna come to. And, and when I, when I first heard about all this stuff, and it was like, if they're not interested in the Sheriff Department, don't think you're gonna draw them in on this other thing. But these young guys now, and I, I've, I've known all of them, and they, they have said that this is one of the reasons why, it's a new society, it's new millennials, it's new people. Most of them are gonna do twenty years, and they're probably gonna get out. I've got thirty-eight in. I was one of the stupid ones, I guess, but I stuck around. And I didn't have gray hair when I started here either, neither did Mark, but... So, I just wanna say that the implementation of all these things, it took a lot for somebody to do that, the mindset to get the men in here. There are so many changes, as the mayor board knows, and as you and the county council should know too, that, that's been implemented here. We've got prior military right now, twenty-year vets that are coming on, and they wanted to be on our department. They wanted the sheriff's office. They didn't want state police, city, they wanted the sheriff's department. We just had a hiring process, a hundred and twenty people applicants. Now, I don't know how many showed up, but I know that we had a hundred and twenty wanting, I believe it's just one position, maybe two, but one position. So that, that's phenomenal for us. It used to be we were the agency where you came in, and then you went to city police, or you went to state police. Now, they want us. And we are one of the predominantly top-notch agencies in the state, if not the country. We have implemented TRIAD, we've implemented a community service, we're saying, Susie, you just saw in the paper the other night, all these things we're doing with the community. We've got two ATR, SUTs with tracks and with wheels, we've got two trailers for them. This is for, for the county, for the citizens that, that we've done here. I can only say that, I, I don't wanna put a halo on this man or anything like that, because you've got horns behind it, but he has really, he's really implemented good things for us. And to, I can speak for the men, and I, I will speak for the men, they don't have any qualms about him going from eight years, thirty days to eight years. And they, they're for this retirement, they're, they're for the sheriff, and as we would've been for Sheriff Gordon. The reality is, this was implemented a long time ago to keep outsiders from running for the sheriff's office. I mean, who would wanna come in and say, I'm gonna be sheriff for eight years, and then say, oh, you didn't get thirty days in, you're not gonna get a retirement? No. And that's why it was implemented many years ago. We've grown since then, our agency has grown since then, and you as county council should, if you don't get out and see the, the public, you should really talk to them, because they, they see it too. And, and, and we go to training all over the state, and all over, out of the United States. And we are, we're predominantly right now, we're on the map with that. And it goes, just like people like Sheriff Gordon, taking over stuff from Kenny Whitaker, and now Sheriff Myers. So, I can't say enough, if you have any questions, hit me with them right now. If not, I'm gonna go back. I, I'm supposed to be off at ten thirty-nine, I've gotta work an hour overtime before they came to this meeting, and I'm off duty right now, okay? So, if you have any questions, ask me now, 'cause I'm here.
Sir, what's your name again?
TA Smith.
Somebody that doesn't know you.
Yeah.
Who would that be, TA?
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff Gordon for what he just did right there with the numbers. We wouldn't have been there without you. And Matt, we carry on, okay?
Good job.
Anybody else in the audience have anything? I quit.
Just wanted to check, does the section five point oh one, normal retirement apply to the sheriff?
Does it apply to the sheriff?
Does it apply to the sheriff or to the other board? It does.
If you wanted to say.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to point out, and you guys have heard this before, that Matt is paid the minimum required by the statute, and he volunteered to sign a contract and accept just the minimum. And he has just wanted in return the retirement that's already been funded for him. He has put in his five years in office, right around a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars into the general fund that he could've taken as additional salary, had he not signed the contract, he didn't. And he'll, he has the opportunity to make about a hundred thousand more by not signing a contract and taking those tax work monies. He's allowed to do that by statute. He doesn't wanna do that. He'd rather sign the contract, put the money in the general fund, and, and just be eligible for the pension that he can, is already funded. And as Stan indicated earlier, it isn't gonna cost the county any more money to knock off thirty days. So, I've made that request a couple of times with the presentation. I wanted you to hear it from Stan and, and hear the numbers, and I just hope you think about that and make the right decision.
Anybody else?
Are there any other questions we need to clear up, Matt?
Only anything I gotta clear up is, and I know it takes three entities to change anything with the policy. I assume all three proposals that you brought tonight has been accepted and passed by the board and by the sheriff, and involves an article.
It's been passed by the mayor board, it's in our minutes.
And I assume Matt, you...
Yeah.
Okay.
Moore? You got anything?
Moore?
Well, I, I'm gonna follow a little bit of what TA...
You don't tell them how great I am? I'm not running for office, but I'll listen.
I have had a lot of conversations with the past sheriffs, Whitaker, who established the eight years and one month. And I understand very well why that was done in his mind. However, that was done twenty years ago. And a lot of things have happened since then. It was also twenty years ago, the economy was not what it is today, and, and there were some shortfalls that we were experiencing in the pension plan. His main reason why he did the eight years and one month was basically that he didn't, he did not think that an individual should come in from the outside of the department and take away monies away from the deputies on the pension. This, basically, what you're telling us is not the case. On the other hand, I think that in the past, government has been very blindsided, and, and they don't look forward thinking as to what is best. I think that changing and bringing new blood into the department, whether it comes from the FBI, or any other federal agency, or state agency, is a good deal. It, it is what has made some of the changes that has happened in this department, and this is why this department is in such a, a great desirable position by other people trying to get some jobs. So, if, if the eight years and one month, which was the logic, I don't think that it should apply, particularly when in other programs in the state of retirement, it does not apply. So from an equality point of view, it seems to me that that, that request that the mayor board is asking to change that is very acceptable, it brings new blood in, and, and, and is very favorable. Since it's not even, it's cost neutral, I, I think that I'm, I'm thoroughly in favor of it. That's what I have to say.
Scott?
No.
Evelyn?
No. Any answer, everything?
No, thank you. Good?
I got one thing.
Hang on, one second, Mark. Dan's got his hand up here. Dan, go ahead.
I'd just kinda like to rephrase this and to represent the mayor board forty-two years ago, up till now. The board's mindset at the time that eight years and thirty days was implemented, was not to necessarily quote unquote, "keep people out." Our mindset was to get people from within our department, who were trained in this department, who would come to this department for a career, gave them an opportunity, or a foot up, if you will, to stay on this department and to run for sheriff. That was the reason. Over the years, things has changed. You're right, Gordon, we're smarter, we're sharper, and that's come from some good hiring of some great people. You know, years ago, if two to three people went to college, now, I don't know the last time we hired somebody that had gone to college. I think that's important to you, I know it's important to the board, and it's important to the citizens of this community, because of the image that the sheriff department has. It's just not we're hiring any guy off the street, man or woman off the street. That's my thought.
Mark?
You know, I, Stan, I appreciate you coming and talking to us tonight, cause it did, you struck me on one key factor that you said, that understanding the snapshot year to year, and let's take personal realities out of it. And it's people, and it's, it's a job, no matter what, we've got forty deputies that we need to take care of, and support even from the death benefit and the drop program. I know we talked the drop program for twenty years, and it's, it's haggled back and forth, and we're here, I'm totally supportive of it, and have been, cause I think I, I presented it one time with Wayne Beatty before the council here. And it's a no-brainer on the insurance thing there. But two things that, that struck me tonight, when you talked about, you know, the snapshot, and take personalities out of its positions and everything else. And I'm in a unique perspective here, cause thirty-five years on the sheriff's department, and watching the programs, and things change, people come and go, and you're right, recruitment and retention has always been a primary focus. And I've seen we're recruiting and retaining college-educated people that are looking for a career. Now, in full disclosure, twenty years ago, when a prior sheriff was asking for the eight years and a month, Mark Orpitt was wanting ten years. And we'll tell you that right now. That's what I wanted there. Cause I had the mindset, what Danny said from forty years ago, it's a deputy's thing there. But I have to also, in full disclosure, after being sheriff for eight years in this community, it's eight years, but I'm gonna tell you, it was twenty-four years, cause it was a twenty-four seven shift. It's a hell of a difference than a deputy. When you look at that, and when you talk about pensions and other things, that's all I got to say.
I was, I appreciate you giving it an opportunity to just speak. I know I've been an aggressive sheriff, and I know I've come in here, and there's been times that we've had disagreements on things. When I took office, my number one priority was the sheriff's office. And I have given it everything that I possibly can, the deputies, the community. I took an oath, I was elected by the people of this community, not only one term, but two terms. I am a constitutionally, basically, it's a constitutional office, I can't run again. I can tell you that, Mark, you told me this was easy, it would run itself. I remember you saying that.
You must've been dreaming that one.
And I can tell you, this is the toughest job I've ever had. It's changed me. It's aged me, but it's the great, but that sheriff's office itself is a, is a unique office. And I think that if the citizens of Ifalla New County elect someone that's not within the sheriff's office, they should get a pension. Just like every other constitutional officer that, that's held, that, that is held in an off, in an office like that. There are qualified people at the sheriff's office that will run for sheriff one day, and they will win. But that, they gotta put their name on the ballot, and they gotta work, and they gotta go to school, and they gotta do all the extra things that put you at a higher level than than others. And if they don't do that, they won't make it. But you gotta have a desire to wanna sit in that chair. I don't think that one month is fair. Mark, I think if Mark made it ten years several years ago, I could understand that, but that one month is really, I lose sleep over that, because it's, I lose sleep anyway. I lose sleep anyway, because I worry about the guys, and the gals, and the community. But it's taken a toll, and personalities aside, it doesn't matter about me necessarily, it matters what we do from here forward. And this should not be an issue that we, that another sheriff has to come up and talk to you all about, if it comes from the outside. You've got qualified people throughout the United States that are coming from outside departments, especially police, fire departments, and they're getting pensions. You see a lot of police departments now that go outside to get their leadership, to get their top person. And I get, I get it. But I also get, I get, you know, that if you wanna be a sheriff, you get onto the sheriff's department, and you work, you work the ranks, but that, that doesn't always work that way. I wanted to be sheriff, I knew I wanted to be sheriff when I was younger. I started off at the sheriff's office. I went to the city because they offered me the, the, a road position before the city, before the county did. And I spent twenty year, twenty-something years over at the city police, building my career to be sheriff one day. And Mark, you shake your head, cause you understand what I'm saying. I was young, and I wanted to be out on the street. So, I appreciate it, I appreciate you all listening. And I just hope that we can somehow knock that month off, so that sheriffs, I don't have to worry about another sheriff in the future that come from the outside, if elected, don't have to worry about it either.
And I, let me add something to what Matt said there.
Thank you.
In any leadership role, even the sheriff, or even council, we need not look at this as a Matt Myers, or anybody else. This is a policy decision-making decision. And we should not look at it... And we should not look at it as Matt or future, we should look at it as how it affects the county financially, and in the future, and base our decision on that, and not have personalities involved. This should be dealt with administratively, and a decision should be made based solely on that. And politics and everything else should be out of it, cause, uh, I've seen through the years, even ten years ago or twenty years ago, that was part of the mix, and things change, and times change, nothing stays the same. And it's, it's something for us to think about, and I appreciate you coming and what you did. And, uh, again, reiterate, tell Stan I learned a few more things tonight about pension, and I thought I knew everything.
You know quite a bit, exactly.
Everybody's gotta learn.
You told me, you told me you leave it the way it was.
Yeah, so...
Does anybody else have questions for the sheriff?